November, December 8, 2020. pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages/how-access-virtual-meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at (774) 301-1455. Enter (1428) for the meeting number and (12345) for the access code. This phone number is only active with the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. So the agenda for tonight's meeting is, I believe, we have two A&amp;Rs, one at 26 Allen Road, and another one being reconsidered, I think, on Podunk and Putnam Road. Is that just the two, Jean? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, after that, we'll have to discuss a request for approval for curbside pickup protocol for caregiver-patient connection doing business as local routes at 365 Main Street. Following that, we'll entertain a request from Draper Woods for the release of funds in the tri-podite agreement. After that, we'll have a discussion and review of the waiver of site plan approval request from Edwards Gas. After that will be the town plan update, and following that will be old and new business. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of Tuesday, November 10?
Excuse me, Charlie?
Yes.
The dial-in-to-meeting, I believe, unless I have the wrong one on my paper, is (774) 304-1455. Is that the correct number, Jean?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I thought that was it.
You said 301, 301.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So it's (774) 304-1455. Great, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, that's fine, I'm glad you corrected that. Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions? Sue, do you have any comments or questions on the minutes?
No, I do not.
Okay, Dane?
None.
Mike?
No, I do not.
Okay, Russ?
On page three, right in the middle of the page, the second bullet, where it says, is there "was" going to be an area for storage, just eliminate the word "was"?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. And then, just down from that, on the last bullet, it says Jay Bivone stated there wasn't comments, maybe it should say there were no comments. Great, can I have a motion then to accept the minutes as modified?
Come on in.
Russell?
Yeah?
Okay, Russell, and so how do you vote, yes?
Yes.
And Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good. Okay, the first A&amp;R is 26 Allen Road. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes, just give us a second and we'll put the plan up. Ethan Hillman was going to join us, but he must have got tied up, I don't, oh, is he here? Oh, hi Ethan, I'm sorry. You are here. All right.
Yeah, I just got on, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have plan here for Ethan and Erica Hillman, and it's for property at 26 Allen Road. And this plan creates parcel A and B by adding a small portion of land shown in the back as parcel C. You'll recall, a few weeks ago, we had a request for a release from chapter land for the Holdcraft property, and that is that small parcel C that you see in the back, that's 12,291 square feet. So this plan will re-carve this into two parcels and add that rear portion onto it. And you'll note that the house does not meet the front setback, however, it predated zoning being built in 1786. So since the lots do have the required frontage, I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the A&amp;R? If not, can I have a motion then to endorse the A&amp;R as submitted?
Come on in, Russell.
Second, Sue.
Great, very good. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good, thank you. Thank you, Ethan.
Ethan.
All right, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Ethan, once Sue comes in and endorses the plan, we'll give you a ring so you can come pick up the Mylar.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay, the next A&amp;R is the A&amp;R for Podunk and Putnam Road. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes, I'm not sure if Joe Levesque is on the meeting. No, it doesn't appear so. So this plan was, is to replace the plan that was previously endorsed by the board in September, and the plan was endorsed and recorded, and then it was found that the wrong, the incorrect roadway layout was used. So the Putnam Road, I can't read it on here, I believe it's the 1934 layout, is actually the correct layout. So it did change the front property line along Putnam Road, and it impacted the square footages of each of the parcels. There is an appropriate notation that this plan will supersede the plan recorded in Book 951, Plan 122. And so, just as the last plan, this plan creates four lots, which all meet the requirements. So since the lots shown meet the requirements, I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, can I have a motion then to endorse the plan as submitted?
No moves, Sue.
Sue?
Second, Mike.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for approval for curbside pickup protocol for caregiver-patient connection doing business as local routes at 365 Main Street. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes. Michael, Michael Stady, do you want to share your screen? Do you have anything to show, or do you just want me to go over it?
No, you can go over, and then Dane and I are here to answer questions, we didn't bring a site plan tonight.
Okay, all right. So we provided in your packet the proposed curbside pickup protocols for CPC Local Roots Sturbridge. So as I said in my memo to you, the Cannabis Control Commission issued Enforcement Order Number One in March of this year, and I did provide you with a copy of that order. And this emergency order was issued in response to Governor Baker's declaration of a state of emergency that was issued on March 10. And under the governor's orders, as you know, it's in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare to practice social distancing at all times. So shortly after that, the Cannabis Control Commission issued an administrative order that would allow curbside pickup for marijuana facilities, both adult use and medical marijuana treatment centers. And what it allowed for is sales to be conducted by phone and by electronic means, in that marijuana may be transferred, marijuana and marijuana products may be transferred into the vehicle to the consumer, curbside. And what the amended order required was that the marijuana establishments notify the commission and municipal officials before beginning the operations. And they also needed to submit standard operating, excuse me, standard operating procedures in a facility layout showing any changes to the outdoor premises. That's contained within your packet. They needed to identify designated curbside sales areas, traffic queuing plans, and signage, which is all contained on the plan within your packet. So the applicant provided these necessary, or excuse me, the revised operating protocols and the necessary plans. We sent them out for staff review, so it went to myself, the police chief, the Board of Health, the building commissioner, and the town administrator as required. No one noted any concerns, and the chief of police, interim chief of police has approved the operating plans. So since there were no concerns, and because it is in the, in an effort to maintain social distancing and provide contactless delivery means until we get through COVID, the staff recommendation is that you approve these new protocols. And Mr. Iandoli and Mr. Stady are both here to answer any questions and can provide you more specifics on their plan.
Very good. Michael, Jean, do you have anything to add before I ask the board members for questions?
No, I think Jean captured it pretty well.
Okay, great. Sue, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, Dane?
I see a door that looks like it's in conflict of the rear of the building with those parking spaces. Am I missing something? When I look at the site plan in my packet, it looks like those angled parking spaces are pretty close to the building, right up to it. And then I see, I see two doors coming out of that back, one from the future space DVD, and one from what we're talking about. Is there a parking conflict back there, or it looks like there's room between the parking spaces and the building?
Michael, you want to take that?
Sure, the parking spaces do go right up to the building. The space outside of our door is reserved for deliveries. Now, it's specifically part of the design for security reasons, and that would be the door that we would do curbside out as well. So that door will either be always open and available as a parking space or reserved for the delivery van.
Well, and just because I wouldn't, it means when we're receiving product to the store, not us delivering things to...
Right, a couple days a week, we'll receive deliveries, usually outside hours, that's what that space is used for. There is enough depth back there so that a door, a car could park three feet off of that door and still not be protruding into the passage of the right-of-way behind it. But the intent for our curbside is to leave that spot open for access.
Good, understood, so there's lots of parking by this change of use back here?
Nope.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Dane. Mike?
No questions, sir.
Russ?
No, I'm all set, Charlie, my questions were answered with the, I just wanted to make sure there was not going to be any queuing in the driveway going to the back trailers and everything to block that out. It appears that that's not going to happen, so I'm good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
I have no question.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion then to approve the curbside pickup protocols as proposed by the applicant?
No moves, Sue.
Sue, thank you.
Second, Russ?
Thank you, Russ. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Jean.
You're welcome, good night.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from Draper Woods for the release of funds from the tri-podite agreement.
Yes.
Jean, do you want to go over that?
I will. So this is a fairly old subdivision, so for the newer members, this is, if you're not familiar with where Draper Woods is, it's the subdivision off of Brookfield Road, Route 148, on the way to Tantascwa. So this development has been under construction for quite some time, and we are finally very near to completion. So the applicant or the developer, Tim Riordan, has requested a release in the amount of $130,000. And this is to cover work completed on berm installation, finish course, and sidewalk construction. The work has been inspected and approved by the DPW director. So I recommend that the board vote to authorize me to sign application number 10 for release of funds from the Draper Woods lenders agreement and to submit that to Hometown Savings Bank for release tomorrow.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? It looks pretty straightforward.
I do, Charlie.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion then to release the, yes?
Jean, with regards to that gate up on Clark Road, wasn't that supposed to be removed towards the completion of the project?
Yes, it's supposed to be complete, excuse me, opened for the final phase. So this is wrapping up the final phase, so that will need to be released. The homeowners that live within the subdivision have been contacting us with some concerns, and I've been explaining to everybody that it is part of the approval, that it needs to be opened. So our intent is, when this is done, to open that gate up. So, so yes, you are correct.
And Charlie, I have one more question. In that same area, next to the gate, there's a catch basin that is covered and clouded, and it's not clear if the catch basin was installed as part of the Draper project or if it was on Clark. And just wanted to throw that out there as an item that needs to be cleaned up if it's part of Draper.
Okay, that might be part of Clark, but I'll let DPW know and ask them to take a ride out there, Dane.
Appreciate it, thank you. I don't have any other objections to the release.
Great, thank you. Everyone else all set? Could I have a motion then to approve the release of the funds?
No move, Russell.
Russ?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Jean.
You're welcome, good night.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from Draper Woods for the release of funds from the tri-podite agreement.
Yes.
Jean, do you want to go over that?
I will. So this is a fairly old subdivision, so for the newer members, this is, if you're not familiar with where Draper Woods is, it's the subdivision off of Brookfield Road, Route 148, on the way to Tantascwa. So this development has been under construction for quite some time, and we are finally very near to completion. So the applicant or the developer, Tim Riordan, has requested a release in the amount of $130,000. And this is to cover work completed on berm installation, finish course, and sidewalk construction. The work has been inspected and approved by the DPW director. So I recommend that the board vote to authorize me to sign application number 10 for release of funds from the Draper Woods lenders agreement and to submit that to Hometown Savings Bank for release tomorrow.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? It looks pretty straightforward.
I do, Charlie.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion then to release the funds?
No move, Russell.
Russ?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request for a waiver of site plan for Edwards Gas. Jean, do you want to go over that?
I do. So I see we have Eddie Wahib, the owner, and Fred Trifoni, his representative, on the meeting right now. Janay has put up the elevation. So this, the planning board approved changes to this property in 2018. I'm not sure how many of the current board members were on the board at that time, but at that time, Mr. Wahib removed the underground storage tanks, installed new gas pump islands, stormwater management, landscaping, paved the driveway. And at that time, he indicated that he wanted to build a convenience store within a portion of the building. But at that time, he wasn't exactly sure how much of the space he would like to occupy, and he didn't have a firm plan. So the board approved the site plan with the understanding that this would eventually become a convenience store, but asked Mr. Wahib to come back with his final plans. So that is what we have before us this evening. Originally, he thought that there would be about 1,200 square feet of convenience store space, and now, actually, they're removing one of the service bays because it's not really being used. They are mostly doing inspection stickers, and then the one service bay is plenty to serve their needs. So the convenience store will end up being 2,010 square feet. And the, as I mentioned, the service bay and the inspection bay will remain. So the parking requirements will still be met. There would be a total required of 14 spaces, and including the 11 spaces at the pumps, there are 23 on-site. So we sent this out for staff review, and no major concerns were noted. The conservation agent did note that she would like stormwater management controls put in, however, this, there's no changes to the exterior parking lot, and that work actually was already approved in 2018. So Mr. Trifoni can probably explain the changes in the building. The design review committee has approved the architectural changes, and from a staff standpoint, I'm recommending approval of the waiver. And Mr. Trifoni, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trifoni so he can explain the plan.
All right, thank you, good evening. We're eliminating two of the existing service bays and converting that into the convenience store. The store increased, like Jean said, from 1,200 square feet to approximately...
2,010.
Yes, 2,010. So, I mean, that's, that's the change. We're basically adding a change of use to a convenience store inside the gas station.
Fred, we can't hear you all of a sudden.
We're changing the use of the existing service base into a convenience store. That's where the increase comes from. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep, very good, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, Sue, do you have any questions on this?
No, I do not. Looks like a nice thing.
Dane?
Yeah?
Dane?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mike?
No questions.
Russ?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, and I'm all set with it as well. Could I have a motion then to approve the waiver of site plan approval?
No move, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, a second?
Second, Mike.
Sue, okay, thank you. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one are the proposed zoning amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. My original, initial thought was that we would include these with the codification packet. However, we did have about a six-week delay while the Board of Selectmen took some careful consideration time to go through some of the changes. And it seems very unlikely, because since now the company has, I think, 140 days to get all the changes back to us, that this will be ready for the annual town meeting. So it's looking like it will actually be the following year's annual town meeting. So I would hate to see the changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw wait that long, especially when it's something we really heard a lot about when we were preparing the housing plan. So if you agree with my recommendation to bring this forward to the annual town meeting this year, the appropriate motion would be for the planning board to vote to serve as petitioner for the proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw and to begin the process for amending the bylaw.
Very good, thank you, Jean. Do you have a motion to that effect?
No move, Russell.
Russ, a second?
Second, Sue.
Jeff, I think Jeff beat you on that one, too, okay.
Okay, that's okay, it works.
Very good. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Great, and I vote yes. Very good.
Okay, thank you. So I'll forward the zoning amendments to the Board of Selectmen, and we'll begin the public hearing process, probably holding public hearings, maybe the first week, the first meeting in February, if not the last meeting in January. And then we have some new, a new business and a relocation. So the painted stone that was across, next to the post office over here, has relocated to 453 Main Street, and that is the small building by Baba Sushi that was most recently used as an office. And I have verified that the shared parking agreement with Southbridge Sheep Metal is still in place, so there is sufficient parking. And she set up a really nice little shop over there, if you want to stop by and do some shopping. And then we also have a new business in town, it's the Northeast Group, and they are locating in 562 Main Street, and that's the white building next to McNucks, that was Julie Garrish's Fitness Center. And they are a manufacturer's representative, and this will be their office.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one are the proposed zoning amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. My orig, initial thought was that we would include these with the codification packet. However, we did have about a six-week delay while the board of selectmen took some careful consideration time to go through some of the changes. And it seems very unlikely, because since now the company has, I think, 140 days to get all the changes back to us, that this will be ready for the annual town meeting. So it's looking like it will actually be the following year's annual town meeting. So I would hate to see the changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw wait that long, especially when it's something we really heard a lot about when we were preparing the housing plan. So if you agree with my recommendation to bring this forward to the annual town meeting this year, the appropriate motion would be for the planning board to vote to serve as petitioner for the proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and to begin the process for amending the bylaw.
Very good, thank you, Jean. Do you have a motion to that effect?
One more, Russell?
Russ, a second?
Second, Sue?
Jeff? I think Jeff beat you on that one, too. Okay.
That's okay, it works.
Very good. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Great, and I vote yes. Very good.
Okay, thank you. So I'll forward the zoning amendments to the board of selectmen, and we'll begin the public hearing process, probably holding public hearings at, maybe the first week in, the first meeting in February, if not the last meeting in January. And then we have some new biz, a new business and a relocation. So the Painted Stone that was accro, next to, um, the post office over here, has relocated to 453 Main Street, and that is the small building by Baba Sushi that was most recently used as an office. And I have verified that the shared parking agreement with Southbridge Sheet Metal is still in place, so there is sufficient parking. And she set up a really nice little shop over there, if you want to stop by and do some shopping. And then we also have a new business in town, it's the Northeast Group, and they are locating in 562 Main Street, and that's the, uh, white building next to McNucks. That was Julie Garrish's fitness center. And they are a manufacturer's representative, and this will be their office. They're relocating here from Norwood. The owner of the company actually has a house here on Cedar Lake, and he lives in Connecticut. So this was a nice move for him, a much closer commute, especially in the summer when he's staying at the lake. And there'll only be a few employees on site. And on occasion, they will be having their retailers come in to look at the products they represent. And they represent mostly kitchen products. He was showing me some of their, or telling me some of the brands that they represent. And so I think this is a nice use for that property because it's a very low-traffic use. So, and then, the next meeting date is December 22nd, and actually, we have no applications right now. So if nothing comes in, we'll let you know, and we will cancel that meeting.
Very good, well, thank you very much, Jean.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have old or new business. Uh, Sue, do you have any old or new business?
No, I do not.
Hey, Dane?
No.
Great, Mike?
Uh, none, no.
Okay, Russ?
No, all set?
Hey, Jeff?
I have nothing.
Okay, and I, the only thing I have, I don't know if everyone knew, but the, uh, the board of selectmen did approve the housing production plan last night in a meeting, so that was good. That's moving forward. And other than that, I don't have any old or new business. So, um, well, hopefully, if, you know, we may have a meeting on the 22nd. If we don't, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll have a motion then to adjourn?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I make a month.
Motion to adjourn. Russ, very good. And Sue, second?
Yes, second, yes.
How do you vote, Sue?
Sue, yes.
Okay, Dane?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Good evening all.
All right, thank you, good night.